I say.
I'm just catching.
All right, so.
You good okay?
Good.
I thought maybe you was running back and forth. Take minutes.
Ah crap.
No, we're fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep them up.
What's that? Oh, honey, I'm sorry. Yeah, I thought you knew. No, I, I had to come like a person. Well, all right, I'll do that still. All righty. Now, is your wife?
Do you need one or no? Good natured.
There's one right there.
Let's sit here with Eddie.
Come here with Eddie.
Okay.
You'd be right mad to sit here.
Haha.
When he died.
Give it another two minutes.
Or have him. Got a lot of people here. No, guys, still okay.
Did I get a pin?
Yep.
Bring my own, thank you.
I don't get out even know how to ride. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
You doing all right?
Yeah. There's nothing came away. Now, you take it on your own thing. How are you?
Good, how are you?
How are you?
Sometimes says that my pick will be your wife.
Yeah, I was about to say. Yeah.
I said when I retire, I could drive.
Yeah, it's calming down. It's calming down.
Silver, everything's silver. I've got some wild cases in the last four years.
Six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get our meeting started. Nobody else outside, the next come in with Rudy.
What can I say, sir?
Of course, as always, I appreciate you guys coming in. Before we get started, Rudy, you care to start us in word of prayer, sir?
Yes, sir. Well, we thank you for your love and your mercy, long suffered, and we thank you, Lord, for the little bit of uh, reprieve that we've had and the help that you've allowed us to have. Uh, for things to sell a little bit smoother, we thank you for that and ask God that you'd guide our footsteps. Give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of what to do to make the best decisions for not just today, but tomorrow. We ask everything in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
All right, now I apologize for my voice again, I'll try to speak up if you can hear me. City of Everts Council meeting at date two in February fourth, two thousand twenty-four is going to be called to order. First thing on our agenda for tonight is going to do financial report.
You have your financial report in your packet. We'll start with uh, our account balances as of uh, January thirty first, two thousand twenty-four. General fund ended the month with sixty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. Cold severance, eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Fire fund had nine thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-one cents. Police drug had two hundred and nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Street fund had thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Recreation, one thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. County garbage fund had twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-eight cents. Cops for kids had seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Tourism, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. Sanitation, sixteen hundred, twenty-seven dollars, two cents. Sewer operations, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. The sewer depreciation reserve, fifty dollars. Water operations, sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. American relief plan had seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. USDA bond account had six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Water deposit fund had ninety-four thousand, ninety-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. KIA fund had a hundred dollars. And the sanitation, or the, the water credit card had two thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, sixty-eight cents. For a total of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. General fund for the month brought in twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and forty-four cents. It expanded twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and three cents. It brought in one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-one cents more for the month than it expanded. For the year, it has expanded nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-six cents more than it has brought in. Your uh, transactions uh, for the month are on the next two pages. I'll give you a second to look over those.
Anybody got any questions about any of the checks I'm sure that I asked?
Sanitation brought in ten thousand, forty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Expanded ten thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Expanded nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents more than it brought in. For the year, it's brought in seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-two cents more than it has expended. Three, three payments it made are on the next page. The sewer brought in twelve thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and thirty cents. It expanded twelve thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and nineteen cents. It expanded two hundred and fifty dollars, eighty-nine cents more than it brought in. It has expended three thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-two cents more than it has brought in for the year. And the water fund brought in forty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and seventy cents. They expended forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. It expanded five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents more than it brought in. For the month, for the year, it has expanded twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents more than it brought in.
I make motion, accept the vote, keep this report.
So, make the motion, accept the report, Jason Seguin, everybody in favor?
Yeah.
All in favor? Thank you, Troy. Next, we're going to move on to the minutes from last month.
You got two sets of minutes in there, we'll do the first one. The city of Everts is scheduled meeting on Tuesday, January sixth, eight minutes, present mayor Eddie Man, Renee Dunn, Jackie Redbrow, Ernie Weir, and Lenny Clark. Meeting is called to order, the finance report is read, Ernie makes a motion to accept the finance report. Minutes for the November fourteenth meeting are read. Larry makes a motion to accept the report. Uh, Jonathan Seguin, all present and agree. Minutes for the November twenty-seventh meeting is read, Renee makes a motion to accept the report. Larry Seguin, all present and agree. Police report is read, Ernie makes a motion to accept the report. Larry Seguin, all present and agree. Fire report is read, Ernie makes a motion to accept the report. Renee Seguin, all present and agree. Water report is read, Jackie makes a motion to accept the report. Larry Seguin, all present uh, agree. And Renee makes a motion to adjourn, Jackie Seguin, all present and agree.
Larry made a motion, accept the minutes, and the lady shaking. Is everybody good with the last minute?
I got one more.
I'm gonna sit in the other side of the man.
While you're signing though, we will read the special call, city council meeting for Tuesday, January thirtieth. Present mayor Eddie Man, Jackie Redbrow, Renee Dunn, Ernie Weir, and Lenny Clark. Meeting is called to order, discussion of the recent water outage and need of funding for repairs. Uh, mayor informs the council that we need to repair our sixty-year-old system, and in order to do that, we'll need to go for loans and grants. Eddie Sparks is present, speaking for the city council regarding recent water outages. Mayor goes over future projects that the water system is in need of. A new storage tank to add extra water storage at this plant, repairs for the city water lines that are over sixty years old. Grants for the water plant and a follow-up on the AML grant. Renee makes a motion for the mayor to look at loans and grants up to seven million dollars for the project. Uh, Jason Seguin, all present and agree. Jason makes a motion to adjourn, and Eddie Seguin, all present and agree.
Larry made a motion, second, 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 Jackie second, is everybody good with the second, second? Yeah, we're gonna send this around. All right, uh, we got a couple engineers, both of you, Ken's here. Just talk to you guys about a sewer project, and we'll do that in old business. Since they've already done it, we'll do it in old business. So, uh, while we're signing this, I'll go ahead and let Rudy give you guys' water report for the month.
Um, as y'all can see, the water loss significantly came down uh, from what it was just last month. Those numbers are estimated because at the time that we had all this going on, last month, we had to estimate the meters due to the snow and then due to the uh, everybody kind of been hands-on deck as far as getting the leaks fixed and things, so that could be a plus or minus five percent or so, but we probably went from about sixty-five percent to anywhere from twenty to twenty-five percent, so that's a huge chunk, and we're still going at it. Uh, gonna try to get that down even lower, but it's probably the lowest it's been in about three years.
He rounds up.
Good job, man.
You guys know that we've uh, we've implemented our plan as far as having the distribution and the, you know, the plants separate from each other, so that that's the plan we implemented uh, when all this started, and that seems to be going real good, so now we've got water. You know, the water plant operators making the water, we've got a separate team that's just doing distribution, which basically means they're looking for leaks. They're looking for people stealing, they're looking for any things that will help us with water loss. Uh, and they, they've been reporting to me, and they're, they're doing good at it. Of course, with the system being down as low as it is right now with water loss, of course, they're harder to find because we don't have as many out there, but that, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
So, as you all seen it, we've been, Rudy can probably tell you a lot more than I can about it, but you know, we're right now, we're down to running as of today, we're down to one well in the mines, the mines has picked up, so we're running off one well right now, and we're not even having these river pumps, which is wonderful. So, that's how much it's helped us, and we're top off there.
And the main thing that we're waiting on is the telemetry to be fixed. Uh, all that money's available, we're just waiting on the company that was awarded the project, and I contacted them today, and they said they're still two to three months out. Waiting on everything to come in, so we's kind of just trying to call them, just kind of poke and prod them just to try to hurry up and get something done, but it don't look like the parts and pieces are coming in anytime soon, so it's probably going to be a early summertime project in all likelihood. Uh, but that will be a tool that we can use that'll help us better understand where the water's going. And instead of it being a system-wide thing, trying to find that other twenty percent, we can narrow it down to half the system, and when you're looking for five hundred meters instead of a thousand, that's going to save a lot of time and a lot of uh, you know, chasing things that's not there, so that'll give us directions to go, and that'll be probably the most helpful thing that we can do, but that's nothing we can do. Uh, the, the project's already been awarded, and they're just kind of waiting on parts, just waiting to tell us. So, that's where we're at on that, hopefully they'll come in sooner than later, but we're probably looking at early summertime before that's completed.
If y'all remember that project, it was bitted and awarded, and was supposed to be done by the end of January originally. And they just can't get parts, they said they're still on back order, so we had to give them an extension. Uh, we talked a little bit today, I think that as far as starting over, you never like to start over, but if they don't meet their next deadline, we may have to look at trying to find somebody else to do the project. I understand things going back order, but we need those telemetries, and it's already, the money's there allocated for it, and just wait until we put them in. And that'll help us a lot with the litigation, I think, so that's uh, the telemetries would be great, and we should get them up and running, new ones. Now, the Shields telemetry works, and the Salton branch did work until this bad storm, so uh, Lawn branch hasn't worked in a while. So, we did that, that'll help us tremendously, so let's be sure. If they don't meet the deadline, I'll come back to you guys and talk to you about how you want to handle it. We've already given one extension. Like I said, I understand things going back order, this is the world we live in, but we need our telemetries. So, we may have to drop down and re-bid it and try to sort something into a pasture, but we'll talk about that in a time soon.
I'll make the motion.
On the water. So, may I make the motion on water for it?
Are we pulling any wa- or using any water, we had a lake?
No.
They just find it leaks up there around it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't nothing to do with us, we were up there and actually helped them with that, get that under control.
Yeah.
Our guys, because we thought maybe it could have been water.
I looked her today, and it, and the man came back and was watching him, and he started talking to me, he said, you all done better week, you gonna use all of our water out of that lake? I said, give me a call, I'll go fishing.
I don't, I've, I've been kind of hitting me up today, though.
Yeah.
They've done, the lake is actually just, it's linking it, you know, it's, they did something in LA to the river, trying to relieve that pressure, so yeah, that's, no, we're not pumping it in, so. Is everybody in favor of the water for it? Yes. Next, we're gonna move on, we're gonna come back to some water here on new, new businesses and stuff. But next, we're gonna come back to uh, we're gonna go to the police report, again.
We had a total of four reports, of those four, two were drug-related, one theft-related, and one assault-related. Uh, thankfully, we had zero on traffic collisions uh, in the month of January. A total of five motor assists, responded to a total of twenty-seven complaints. Uh, five agency assists, seven traffic stops, and ten arrests. Uh, total officer man-hours of three hundred and seventy-eight hours.
And then?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, in your last report, you didn't, um, I know we always do it every year since I've been doing it. How many kids did you have for cops for kids? You didn't have it in the report last month.
It was either fourteen or sixteen?
It was fourteen, yeah, it was fourteen.
And you spent well?
I don't have the, that report.
It was in one of the reports we had.
Last month, shouldn't be.
You know, because it wasn't in a, you know, because we always had to, you know, report it every time we used the money.
Oh, I can get that for you, though, I can get that for you. Is that the only, anybody got any questions for Danny, any others?
No, I make the motion.
Okay. Larry Seguin, is everybody good with the police report? Next is my favorite time of the night, I say my money man, Cleto.
Yep, yep. In this time around, we only had two fires. Been, been about all that's going on, other than that, been pretty quiet.
Yeah.
That's the way we like it, quiet.
Yeah.
But it's, it's two, two fires, all we had going on this time.
Yeah, I was lucky when Cleto got the smallest report in the night.
Yeah, I've got moved in, in your new place?
Mm-hmm.
I need to stop in to say.
Come on, we'll see us doing if you want to. Tuesday night at six o'clock, take all the volunteer we can get.
Listen, there ain't no drinking, no hoes for me.
I have the job for everybody. You do traffic and throw paperwork. There's often, there's always something to do.
You got a truck? Only thing, Cleto, these guys.
I can grind that gear so fast, they miss it.
There you go, there's your job.
When you come over and help me change the lock for that old man up there next to you.
Ain't no problem, no problem.
Thank y'all for giving that water.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, for the people, you know.
Are you finished, Cleto?
I'm done.
I'd like to make it. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Everybody good with uh, Cleto's report?
Thanks, man.
Thanks, man. All right, next, we're gonna move to old business. Uh, we got a couple of things in old business we'll go over. Uh, one will be the sewer project that we had, you know, the uh, the five hundred thousand dollars that we got for the wastewater, which is sewer. Uh, so that, that project, we want to go over tonight, I think Ken's here to talk to us about that and let you know where we're at on it. And maybe even a resolution so we go ahead and get that project started. If you all look at our sewer numbers, our, we're spending a lot of money repairing sewer system right now. This project will take care of, it will, you know, completely update all of our lift stations. So, that will really relieve us on the sewer fund right now, once that project's up and rolling and it's done. So, Ken, I'll let you talk to them about that.
If you recall, the total project estimate cost was uh, what, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand? And you got five hundred thousand, and back uh, six months ago, or whatever, y'all agreed to go to the KIA for a loan to get the other hundred and eighty-eight, so we could do all of it and uh, uh, update all the lift stations. So, you should have a resolution there that uh, we had to wait until we got the audits and the financial stuff updated before we could actually apply for it. So, that's been the holdup on that. Now, we've got that, so we just, we need a resolution to turn in the uh, application to KIA for the other hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
We've already, you guys have already approved us to borrow the rest of the money to fix that sewer system. So, all we need to do tonight is Christie will have to read the resolution. We pass the resolution, and then once we do that, we can get that done. That, now that wastewater money, that five hundred thousand dollars is still in Franklin. That don't get released until the project is.
Yeah, we'll have to draw it down as, we'll have to bid, bid the renovations and uh, then award contract, and as contractor does things, and we'll have to draw it down. They won't send us a check. They probably sent you a big starphone check.
Yeah, we got a little while in there.
Yeah, uh, but, but that's the only kind of check you'll get until we actually expend some of the money.
Christie will read the resolution, we'll get it passed.
Authorizing resolution of city of Everts for filing a loan application, appointment appropriate local government officials and successors in the title as official project representative of an infrastructure revolving fund, Fund B state revolving loan program project. Whereas the city of Everts proposes to complete a project as identified in the water resource information system, WRIAS, as SX two one zero nine five zero one five. And whereas the city of Everts adorses said project, and whereas, under the terms of amendment two KRS two two four A, the state is authorized to render financial assistance to eligible project applicants by way of the infrastructure revolving fund, Fund B state revolving loan program, established to aid in the construction of eligible infrastructure projects with consideration for approval to be based on applications submitted through KIA. And whereas the improvements proposed for construction by the city of Everts within the city of Everts sewage collection system area are considered eligible for such loan assistance. Now, therefore, be resolved by the city of Everts city council and mayor Eddie Man and successors entitled are hereby authorized to execute and submit an application through the Kentucky infrastructure authority with such assurance and required supporting data as it is necessary to obtain loan assistance from the infrastructure revolving fund, Fund B state revolving loan program. For the proposal, facilities, improvements, and hereby authorized as a city of Everts official project representative to carry out necessary negotiations for and near-strength loan assistance. The applicant may obtain the infrastructure revolving fund, Fund B state revolving loan program, adopted this twentieth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the resolution? Jason, a motion, and Preston Seguin, is everybody in favor with this? Okay, we'll get this started on this. Uh, this will be a big help to us because our sewer system, and this will update all of our pump stations, seventeen, is that correct?
Yeah.
Seven. So, this will update all seven of our pump stations with new double pumps, and that'll alleviate, even though we're borrowing money on it, uh, this project will, it'll hold us for years and years and years, and it'll be a lot better than paying a payment than it will be paying out to fix all these pumps we've been paying out for sewer. So, that'll, that'll help us a whole lot. Okay, so that's passed, we'll take that.
Ken, does Eddie need to sign this too?
Yeah.
All right, we got that done, next, in old, we're still in old business. I want to let Mike talk to you guys a little bit, if he's got a minute.
Sure.
About the storage tank project, and that, that project, uh, we talked about last month. That project really excites me because it's going to take us from six months to six hours of storage if we have an emergency, twenty-four hours. A lot of, a lot of people don't know, if we had an emergency in Everts right now, like our system's set up, we've only got six hours of emergency storage. That don't leave you much time for, for anything to happen. So, this, this project will give us uh, up to twenty-four hours, and now with the water loss, then maybe even more, don't you think, Rudy? So, that'll give us more water storage, uh, that'll give us as much water storage almost as we already got, so if we have an emergency, like say if we're pumping out the river and it's muddy and we can't pump, or uh, if we have something going on, and that'll give us enough storage for we're, we can, we, you'll have a lot of water. So, this will be a big asset or something. So, I'll let Mike talk to you guys about it a little bit, more.
Yeah, what you have is kind of an update of what I've been working on since uh, November the twenty-seventh, and uh, we did new project profiles. The water storage tank was actually a recommendation by the Division of Water. They came and did some checking, and what that'll allow, it is storage, and it will actually allow us a clear well backwash. So, we're actually putting in pumps so they can lower the level of the tank and utilize the entire portion of the tank and the existing tank. So, that's almost seven hundred thousand, so that'll give us approximately twenty-four to thirty-five hours of storage. So, that would allow us, if we had, you know, bad water coming, that we would at least have some water that we could put aside. We did apply for an ARC grant uh, for the tank. We do have clearinghouse comments, and they have been approved as of February the eighth. Uh, which that's the beginning of the environmental process, so they've got recommendations on what we need to do with fish and wildlife and, and things like that. So, uh, we've uh, also responded, KIA sent a request, some clarifications based on the size. The original uh, application we put in was for four hundred and ninety-one thousand, and uh, based on the money and numbers, we went five hundred and thirty-one thousand, and it actually gave us a total of twenty-four hours. It matched the plant capacity, so uh, that's how we came up with that number. So, uh, we applied for the ARC. we applied for the ARC. The judge said that, once we got the ARC, that they would have four hundred thousand grant from their coal severance. And as a backup, we also got on the KIA SRF of low-interest loan list. You had to be on the list prior, we done that by December the fifteenth to get on twenty twenty-five. So, uh, we're on that, they actually had a few questions, I answered that, that's also included in your packet. And, uh, so that's what we've been doing on the tank, and of course, we've been doing other stuff too.
All right, and just to clarify, to make sure I clarify, is we have to procure an engineer for these projects. We've not done that yet because there's, uh, we have to put out bids for it. You know, Ken and Mike have both been doing a lot of work for us, but next meeting in March, uh, by that time, SEVAD should have us, the stuff we need to put that in the paper for, for biz procurement. So next meeting, you guys will have to decide, uh, who we're gonna use as engineer on these projects. I just wanna make that clear, Mike's given, Mike's been doing the work on that, Ken's been doing a lot of work. But ultimately, we have to do it, legally, we have to procure the engineers, so you guys have to decide that. Not the sewer, because Ken's already got that one.
That'll be specifically for the treatment plant, because each individual project would, would, would have to go through RFQ.
For the treatment plant and the, and the storage. Just, just wanna make it perfectly clear, while we was all here, we understood that. Uh, so, but I think that the, the way that works with this grant, we've applied for the ARC grant. Uh, of course, we've been, approval and funding is completely different, we all understand that. You can be approved, and once you're approved, that just means you're approved for the application. Uh, it's really confusing the way it works. But now, from my understanding, that's a one point four million dollar project that will help us a lot quick. And it won't be something that'll be four or five years out, this will be something that's six, maybe seven months out.
Right.
So what that'll do is, that's a million dollars that ARC grant, and I think that we'll, even though we're not, we're approved and not funded, I think it'll get funded, I've been promised that. And then that'll leave us four hundred thousand dollars short, and Judge Mosley has promised that he'll take four hundred thousand from coal severance and complete that project. So once we get the procurement done next month, we can, we can start on getting that done pretty quick. That, that project will, I think that'll help us in the, that'll help relieve us fast. That maybe, that's our quickest option as far as helping us. So, uh, has anybody got anything else they need to ask, or anything, any questions? Eddie?
I'm sure, I'm sure where you're gonna be locating it at.
Right now, the location looks like it's gonna be right beside the old tank up there. And you gotta look now, that tank we got up there, to my understanding, Woody can correct me if I'm wrong, because he's, he's the system expert, but that's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Eighty-three.
Okay, that's the biggest tank we have, correct?
Yep, the other one's just about like it, it's a hundred and eighty-nine, they're within six thousand gallons.
If you look at that tank being a hundred and eighty-nine thousand gallons, and we're talking about putting a tank beside it, it's gonna be five hundred and thirty-three thousand gallons.
Two and a half tons.
Right, so what that, that will help us with storage, and like I said, you know, if we have a, something connected to emergency, because Lord knows we have emergencies in Everts, Kentucky. We have an emergency, then we go from having that little tank for storage, and some of our tanks, other tanks, to getting almost double our capacity. So that'll give us enough room, or if we had something going on, that, you know, that we've got enough water stored up, that we can go a couple of days, not just six hours, like we had.
Well, and the biggest thing would be the pumps that's gonna be in that project for the backwash water. Um, we don't have to maintain a huge level of water within the tank. Uh, we can pump whatever we got in the tank out into the system. If we've got four or five feet, we should have enough water to backwash, so it's, um, that'll allow us to just push as much as we got on hand out in the system and buy us more time, so that's something we currently don't have, we just, uh, that's why we have to have the tank levels at a certain capacity in order for there to be enough pressure there to come into the plant. Because even at thirty-two feet, you're only looking at eleven or twelve PSI coming in, so that's not very much water anyway, so this will help with the, the filter washes and all that, and that'll, uh, help ensure the life of the filters, so.
Let me say this, Woody.
Yes, sir.
This is up here near our leaning tower.
Yeah.
Water tank up here, is this sustainable, will it hold all this?
Well, we'll do, of course, we'll do a geotechnical review, and, uh, I actually talked to the contractor that installed the other one, and he said they excavate the, the one that's standing now, and he said they excavated all the material, hauled it off, and then built it back up with stone. So, of course, we'll do geotech, find what it is, the low bearing of the rock and soil there, and then we'll design the foundation accordingly.
Mike's gonna personally guarantee it, so.
Yeah.
Like I said, let me say this, um, just because, and I've told somebody this today, I said, just because we're doing good, I mean, we're down to the mines, one whale, we're not gonna pump out the river, we've got water overflowing in our tanks, we're doing great. Just because we're doing good, don't mean we need to let up on people, getting on to the governor and other people to help us, because come summer, we're running back in this phone if we don't. So, I don't want people to forget, that they still need to talk to the representatives, they still need to talk to people. Because it's kinda out of, you know, out of sight, out of mind when you're doing good, but we don't need to let up.
Well, in a month's time, we went from sixty-five cent to around twenty percent, so that tells me that in a month's time, we could go from twenty to sixty-five.
Right.
And I don't anticipate that happening, but that is a way we need to look at it, so that we remain proactive instead of reactive.
The thing that's helped us the most during all this is being people contacting the governor's office and contacting your state representatives, because there is a pool of money that was set aside in two thousand twenty-two for just this reason by the state legislature, it was put aside, it was ten million dollars. It was put aside to help water systems, ailing water systems in this part of the state, because a lot of the water systems are old. As of a couple of weeks ago, they told me that they had spent, now this was two thousand twenty-two, they had spent nine hundred thousand dollars and gave that to Martin County to help their water system. There's still nine point one million dollars sitting in that fund that's made for this specific reason. So, and the governor's on board now, he's heard the complaints, he said, I'm gonna help you guys, and that's what we need, but if people quit complaining, they'll think we're fixed, we're not fixed, and we, we're just in good shape right now. So, yes, sir.
Brad Enlow, um, you're fixing to have a crazy platform of people calling Uncle Andy for you. I'm from Harlan, uh, I live downtown, and I'm covering a little bit of everything in this county, from the homeless people to this, everything else, so we need, how is this compared to the twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, when I was at the county, uh, road department, the Green Hill disaster? Like, what's the, can you explain, people's wanting to know the difference?
I didn't know much about the Green Hill stuff.
I was working there, but I had a few, few car wrecks since then. I was taking water over there as an accounting employee with inmates, is that going on up here? We gotta give them water out.
We, yeah, we've been giving water out.
Like the road department, and then my.
Road departments help this, fire departments has helped this.
I thought so, I just wanted to make sure, but where do you go, just call the, I, all these people watching, and all my platform.
We have two state representatives in Harlan.
Johnny Turner.
Johnny Turner, Adam Boland, Adam Boland's contacted us, Johnny's office has contacted us, they're helping. Adam actually went to the state a couple of weeks ago and asked about this money I'm talking about, you know, about this money that's sitting in the legislature for us. Uh, we're, we're gonna get help, but what I'm afraid of is, I don't want people to quit complaining. Listen, I want you to complain. I want you to keep, because if you don't keep the pressure on them, they're not gonna help us.
Side note, so happen.
Yeah, so I want you to say, hey, look, even though we got water today, let's get this, you know, steel hell, Everts, they, they, they pretty much well told us about some projects that I think we're gonna get awarded, but until you get that award letter in your hand, it's hard to tell people, you know, hey, this is what they're gonna do, because you never know what'll change. But keep your complaints up, Hal Rogers has been wonderful, Mitch McConnell's office has been wonderful. Uh, just keep those complaints up, don't stop, because we're doing good. Because in the summertime, we'll be feeling pools, we'll be doing all this, and our mines will be, and we're right back in the same boat. And it may not be as bad, and we hope it's never that bad again. But keep complaining, that's what I tell people, keep complaining, don't stop.
I got a platform around here that will be complaining, trust me.
Keep talking, because they're not, they're, they're only gonna, they're only gonna help us when, when they're getting complaints, when they're hearing the complaints.
People's gonna say this, there'll be about three thousand people probably watch this, and I'll drop numbers and everything, so we'll get you some complaints.
We need them, hey, every.
Don't worry.
Keep falling back to that good when you need it.
Has anybody, has anybody got anything else in old business? Ken, you got anything to add?
Resolution is what I need to.
That's all, thank you.
All right.
I got something I wanna ask, I wanna know, why are you all not being transparent on Facebook anymore? I mean, to me, it's like you're trying to hide in the shadows.
We're not trying to hide nothing, that's for sure, if you got any questions, you know, we'll answer them, as far as Facebook goes, we try to update everybody, and the Attorney General's Office called me about this, and they went back and looked through our Facebook, and they said, actually, you guys has updated more than any water system I see. We update with the best knowledge we have. Uh, it's hard to give updates every hour or two, because so many things change. Woody does the updates, of course, and he gives it to them to post on Facebook.
But you're planning on deleting that, right?
We ain't planning on deleting it, no. What we're planning on doing, we've got an all-call system in place now, but we won't delete the Facebook. The all-call system will take care of as far as.
But we won't post on Facebook.
But we won't post as much on Facebook, because that's what the all-call system's for. The all-call system will, once you sign up for it, it'll give you updates on your phone, or however you need it. It'll call you, or it'll text you. That's, that's what the, and that was another, uh, recommendation of the Attorney General's Office, they wanted us to do that, they thought that was a better system. Because not everybody's got Facebook, but everybody's got a phone. So they thought that would be a better system for us to go by.
Okay.
So a lot of people's not using Facebook, they're using other platforms, maybe TikTok, even seriously TikTok.
Yeah.
A lot more people's on there, a lot more people's on YouTube.
The, uh, the system the Attorney General's Office wanted us to use was that, and they felt like that that was a better system for us to go to, because like they said, a lot of people don't have Facebook, most people in this room probably don't have it, some of them do. But they felt like that was a better way for us to get out the updates through that all-call system. And that, what that'll do is, that'll, once you sign up for it, uh, and as people come in to pay the bills, we're asking them to sign up, it's free to the customers, uh, and it'll give them updates, like if we have anything going on, it'll give them updates.
Like an Everts Ambreler.
Yeah, then it'll give you texts, or have you want.
Just the same, like when they call and cancel school, it's the same, the same identical.
And that's probably a better system as far as being able to get out to everyone.
That is, so pretty good.
Uh, but like I said, when, when the Attorney General's Office called me, they felt like that we had updated more than about any water system they've ever seen, and I said, we're doing the best we can as far as giving updates. But we, daily updates is usually about what you're working on, because you really don't know what's going on, you know, every hour is different.
Well, during, during all the problems, we gave updates every two to three hours.
Yeah, you all updated, right?
I don't, I don't know what more we could have updated, to be honest with you, but we can't sit at a computer all day long, we got other ob- obligations either, so we used to getting our work done and trying to update as we could, and being as transparent as possible, which is way more transparent than most utilities, and I understand why, because a lot of them's so outstretched that they didn't have time just to keep posting updates, they were busy fixing leaks, trying to restore water, so it was just a priority thing.
Yeah, and as far as B-mud's customers, you know, we was on the phone with B-mud constantly around this. So they had updates, whether they sent them to their customers, I can't tell you, but now we give them updates, because they needed updates too. So, uh, but that's what we're going through, is the all-call system, we think that'll be a better system, and that was recommended by Kentucky Attorney General's Office. So we're gonna do that, and buy them, of course. Has anybody got anything on old business? I'm gonna move on to new business, which, new businesses mean a lot of water too, so. Uh, Hal Rogers' office has contacted us, they've been in touch with us a lot, I appreciate them a whole lot, as far as everybody that goes. Uh, they've probably been in contact, of course, the judge has, but now Hal Rogers' office has been in contact a lot. He has some discretionary funds that he has through Congress that, uh, we filled out, sent into him, hopefully they can give us some discretionary funds and help us, and I think the way the discretionary funds work, it'll be at Hal Rogers', uh, discretion. So that'd be great, and that's, comes from complaints, call them. You see what that gets you when they call you and say, I got discretionary funds, you all apply for them, we'll see if we can help them. So that, that's, that's gonna be something that'll help us, and hopefully they'll be able to do, do some of that for us.
And in regards to that, if somebody does need the email addresses, mailing addresses, phone numbers, please call. We'd be happy to type a letter out for you and put a place for you to sign your name. Uh, because it's only gonna help bolster the points we've been trying to make, and they're gonna listen to the constituents more than they'll listen to us, because we're, you know, we're the workers, and of course, we'd like a new facility, but when it comes from the, the voting base and it comes from the consumers, that's when it'll really get the attention, so, so that's, that's gonna be something that's necessary, like Eddie's trying to, uh, iterate to us.
Yeah, and some, and things that hurt us in Everts, and it hurts us all over the county, is, and I've explained this, you know, was that, you know, our water system's got a thousand customers, a thousand and ten customers, that's all that's in our water system. And, you know, when we go out and borrow money to fix things, you know, that has to be split up between the thousand customers we have, that's through instant rates, whereas when you get to a big municipality, you know, they may borrow five million dollars and it's spread out between two hundred thousand customers. And that's one of the biggest, biggest disadvantages we have in Harlan County is, is we have such a small population that those people keep getting hit. That's why you need your state representatives to help with things like this. Because, you know, it's not, it's not fair, but it's our population. So, uh, that, that is one of the, it's always been one of our biggest disadvantages. We don't have the customer base that they have in big municipalities, we don't have the tax base they have. But when it comes to millions and millions of dollars, uh, that's where the state needs to step in and help us, and they will, if we keep complaining. Stop complaining, they'll say, oh, they're fixed. We're not fixed, we're in way better shape than we was, and we're doing a better job at it. But as far as being fixed, the water plant's just blew out. It's just, we've talked about it, uh, it started in nineteen ninety when they built a dam to put water to a plant, and then build a plant that wouldn't handle water out of the river. So, that's when it started, and it's just progressively got worse, and we've added stuff to it, we've added new businesses, we've added jail, home center, more houses. And over the years, it's like a car, it's like a car with five hundred thousand miles on it, and it's, it's just bigged up. So I think that we're gonna get help, but I think that we're not gonna get help if we don't keep complaining. So we need to keep doing that, we need to stay on it even during the good times, just like the bad times. So, that's all I had in new business. Has anybody got anything else, council members? Is anybody, anything, any questions, don't mind a bit to answer, and Eddie, you got anything? Mark, you got anything?
No, sir.
You got anything?
I just, I've got people on here that would love to have them, I mean, we can Google them, but I would love to have a copy of them numbers just to post on here, even though people can Google them.
Woody's got every bit of them, he's got email addresses, he's got phone numbers, he's got everything you need, and you know, like I said.
We're very transparent.
You just want to, you just wanna let them know that we still need help, because, like I said, it, you know, you get a car with five hundred thousand miles on it, and it finally is running right.
Oh, it busted out pieces?
Yeah, it's, it's still intact, so if you neglect it and say, oh, and we're okay, then, uh, they'll forget about us. We don't wanna forget about us, because we're still in the pit, yes, Eddie?
Uh, I know there was some talk at one time about maybe splitting up some of the system from Ages toward Harlan and trying to redistrict some of that, did that go away, is that still?
Me and Dan talked about that a couple of years ago, and the problem with that is, is elevation. Just like we have with Close Plin and Llewellyn customers, it's elevation. Harlan can pump water up so far, but once you get to the Ages community, they can supply water in the bottom, Ages Bottom, but they cannot supply water to about ten houses, to my understanding, up on the hill at Ages. So, up on the hill at Cox, and also, so what happens is, they don't, they need, actually, if they had a pump station, they could do it. But they don't have a pump station in between there, it's, it's just elevation. So if you've got water from Harlan, you're gonna have houses without water, because they don't have the elevation, whereas our elevation, it's running downhill, so we can get to the houses good. Yeah, that, that's, that's, was looked into. It would be a lot cheaper to put a pump station and pump it from Harlan, but then what if you overstrain Harlan? See, Harlan, they've got good water, they pump out of the river, and they've got a good, you know, a good system, but how much more can you put on them? Because they already wholesale water. So for right now, in order to keep everybody in water, it needs to come from Everts. I, I would love to see that took off of us, it would relieve us a lot, but it's just not possible with the systems, the way they are from Harlan right now. That makes sense.
It does, it does, it sounds like, I guess, and that was some of my, uh, concern coming here tonight, was wondering. It does, it does, it sounds like, I guess, and that was some of my, uh, concern coming here tonight, was wondering, uh, in the short term, you know, leaks have got fixed, and so it's been great, and things are going well now, but some of the things you mentioned in last meeting about lava turn projects, like redoing the water plant, that's where I was wondering where we're, we're at with that. Uh, storage tank, it sounds like it's gonna be a.
That'll help us, but as far as the water plant goes, we gotta procure, we'll have to procure an engineer for that before we get started on that again, that should be done by next meeting. We think that with the way Seabed's doing it, we think we'll be able to get it bided, council will decide, and then we can move forward with that project. That project's a lot more lengthy project than fixing these tanks, than putting another tank in there. The tank will be an immediate, the tank will be immediate and helpless, but.
Actually declared a state of emergency, so they went ahead and approved that, so that we didn't even have to go through a procurement as far as an engineer goes. So, um, if that's done correctly. So, that's, uh, that's our understanding, and that, what, what they told me is something that is, can be done immediately, and what they say immediately is in, you know, three, four, or five months. Once the money's there, you can get a tank up, but they said a plant project is not an emergency situation, because that's something that's gonna take years. So that's why we're able to move so quickly, uh, by them declaring, I think it was in November, the state of emergency, so that opened up some doors for us to move faster on the, the smaller things before we get to the larger project, which is the plant.
And one thing I want you to understand is, you know, Buckhorn, the only plant that I know of in eastern Kentucky that's been awarded was Buckhorn, which secures City of Hazard, City of Hazard and Buckhorn was without water the whole time, we was without water. So that money, even though that project's been, uh, awarded and starting to fund, you're still years away from getting it done. So for us, you know, even if they come in right now and send us ten million dollars to our table and say, there you go, there's your money, you're still talking years away from getting a plant built, so we've got to look for, we've got to look for solutions that is more immediate, that will help problems now, because as, we've talked about it, three or four years to get a plant built, I'd say it'd be hard to build one in three or four years. By the time you did the minnow studies, bat studies, probat studies.
Environmental.
Environmental stuff, and you get all that done, so for us, you know, yeah, we want a plant, and we need a plant, and we're gonna fight for a plant, and we want the funding for a plant, but we've got to look at the immediate, we can't go through four more years of this. So we got things to do, and that's where I think the tank will come in, I think that's where having a distribution manager now is gonna help us. Uh, uh, having them in here to train our guys for leak detection, and one thing about it, and I, I might've told you guys this last meeting, it made me feel better about leaks. You know, we had one big leak, it was a big leak up here by the Ages Church of God. Our guys chased that leak for a long time and really couldn't find it, we had the experts in there. They had a hard time finding it, I mean, so they said, oh, we found it, then they didn't find it, then they found it, so that made me feel better, as our guys, you know, they're good, they're not experts, they're trained good, but I mean, if they're having, if they can't find it, if they can't pinpoint it, you know, and they're the experts, our guys, you know, they're having a hard time pinpointing, so that made me feel better about that. But we, you know, we've gotta make small steps to make sure that we don't, that we ensure that we don't get in the same boat we was in. And I think having a distribution manager's gonna help us, because he talks to me daily, or every other day, and lets me know what's going on, and I know they're looking for leaks. We got, for our system to be, uh, successful, that system needs to stay around five hundred thousand gallons a day to be successful, wouldn't you say, Woody?
Absolutely.
Okay, there was times during this water outage, we pumped eight hundred thousand gallons a day.
Still losing.
And still losing water, so, and our plant's just not designed to do that much pumping. So for us to be successful, we've got to keep our water loss down, we've got to keep, uh, all the stakes to a bare minimum, just to stay afloat, so, and that's what we plan on doing, you know, and because I'm telling you, new plant's not gonna be in here a year.
Yeah, I understood that, I was, at some point, you gotta get that forward momentum, or four years down the road, you'll be sitting here having the same conversation.
That's correct, yep, and we're, we're gonna have problems in the following year, because that's when everything dries up. And you know, when the U.S. Geological Service says, tell me, I just called them, and I said, you know, look, we've deepened all four of our wells, we cased them, we've done everything we can do in Everts, I wanna drill another well, and they told me, they said, really, I'm not used to drilling another well in Everts unless you wanna look in the South Branch area, that told me that we're pretty dry in Everts. They're, you know, shot in the dark to drill a fifty thousand dollar well, and their recommendation was look to South Branch. So I was kinda concerned about that, you know, of, of the longevity. Now, as far as getting out of the river goes, you all know we've got a second pump set up at Yocum Creek. We've not had to use it yet, they pulled it and done a well, and that's great, we didn't have to use it, um, and I hope we never have to use it, but it's there if we need it. So, and that's, that's, that'll come, Yocum Creek will clear a lot faster than Clove. So, I hope we don't have to, I hope we're able to keep our leaks down, and we're able to, uh, but eventually, guys, we know that this is Everts, we go through hard times. We're gonna have another coke spill next year that's gonna be just like this, we do it every year. So, we've just got to make sure that the next year, when it happens, we're not at forty percent water loss and then go to sixty-five. We need to be at twenty, fifteen, and go to forty, and that makes it much more manageable, if that makes sense.
Woody, it, losing water, damage of broken pipes or whatever, versus people borrowing our water and not paying for it.
That's all.
What's the bigger, is that about the same?
Uh, no, no, the, that's all included within the water loss, uh, we take that in consideration within those numbers, yes.
Yeah, that's part of it, you know, we went, we had one day where, I think, I wanna say back in Sett Kimber maybe, where our guys finally got a chance to go out and start looking for, you know, going meter to meter, look for stealing.
Dirty Davis, and they'll steal it.
And one day, they had found five customers stealing water in one day.
Sure did.
So now we got, see now, we got, the way we've got the distribution system set up, they can start doing that, you know. When you don't have water, it's all hands on deck, fixing anything and fixing, but when you're doing good is when you can start looking for stealing, and there was some pretty good stealing of them, uh, I, I don't think it's, uh, five to ten percent, but it, it could be, but. But we've got to stay on that, we've gotta make sure nobody's stealing water. If you see somebody stealing water, neighbors, they call any neighbor, trust me, every complaint we get from a neighbor, call any neighbor. Because if they're stealing water, it ain't fair to you.
No, sir.
If they're leaking water on the ground, and wasting it, that ain't fair to you, so, call them. Does anybody got anything else? I mean, I didn't ask you, what's your name, or if you have anything to say, anything to ask?
Um, I'm, I'm Mackenzie Gill, and I'm here with Black and Knowledge, I was just wanting to, um, if it's okay, I would like to pass out some fire fuel.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, you got behind me, and I just thought she was there.
Yeah, I came from a little lake.
And it comes with all the.
I have, um, two events going on, this is for anybody in the room, anybody that wants us, um, we work with different projects, um, one I'm working with right now is water. Another I'm working with is land and revenue, so I have two things passed out right now, one concerning each, and we wanted to get to know the community a little better, I'm from Cumberland, um, but I work with all of Harlan County, so I'm really excited to learn more, um, let me get these here for y'all. That should be enough for everybody at the table if you'd like to pass them on, and then this one is for a Free Will's clinic, um, this is just a free service that we've brought here with our legal partners we got. Now, this water program, uh, we just really, we wanna listen, we wanna learn, and, um, also sharing knowledge that we have, if anyone has questions at the event, um, this will be at the library on the second, so, that's what we have.
As we say, we want all the, take all the help we can get.
Thank you, so. Yeah, now, the Will's one does involve everybody, the Everts one, we did this, uh, for your else community, we're just really wanting to learn more, and also, like I said, share any knowledge, if there's anything that, um, anybody has questions at the event, uh, but we have a little bit of a agenda going on there that we, uh, have planned, and then we also are gonna open up at the end of the week, so. Um, but I, I wanna be here more often, be at these, uh, meetings and learn more about actual, so I'm very excited to be here, so, that's all I have.
Okay, has anybody got any questions? Anybody got any questions there? Anybody got anything else, or tell me?
I just got one question, sorry, I'm from Harlan, I was covering the, how the homeless is down there, and how it's exploded here like big cities. I was over at TNC, Antichrist Hands the past two days covering this stuff, is it that bad up here now? I forgot to ask him or anybody on Facebook.
It is, it's, I would say, I feel like it's, it may be a better question for the officers, of course, they had it.
Right.
To go.
Yeah.
Um, we still got a lot of it, it's, I don't know if it's as bad as it was about two years ago, cause it got really bad about two years ago.
Oh.
But we still got it, uh, we've got some, uh, we've got some people, some tents up on the riverbank here and there, uh, yeah, it's still, it's still an issue, it is an issue. You know, and I want people to understand, uh, one thing about homelessness.
Sir.
It is not against the law to be poor.
No, I'm poor.
People need to remember that, because a lot of people don't, they look at it differently, you know, why are you, why did you allow them to have a tent on the riverbank? Well, we're not allowed to do it, but there is nothing in the world against the law to be poor, we're all been there, we're all still there, so, uh, you know, we've gotta help them, not let them down on them, that's, that's the way it is.
Now, what I was wondering is, sorry.
That's okay.
Like, they let them at Christ Hands people in, I hate saying them, cause I'm like, them, you know? But they, Christ Hands will let people in from like eight to seven-thirty, and then they, they're just back out, and they go, oh, until it warms up, y'all don't have nothing up here, y'all could let them.
We don't have a shelter, we don't have anything in Everts.
What about, what's in the old Everts gym?
That is.
I'm from Harlan, guys, I'm new to this, and I don't mean no disrespect.
No, the Everts gym is owned by the Club Sport, Club, Club Sport Education for Progress, is that correct, the name of that group? And that is, that is a group that owns it, they own that in the depot, I, I wish the city did have access to that stuff, but it's not ours to have access to it.
That's all I got, yeah, thank you.
And I wish there was more places up here, I do know they give meals out down here on the main street.
The Baptist church does.
Baptist church, so, and you see a lot of blessing boxes, and I think they're utilized good in Everts.
Yeah, I believe they are.
It's, I wish people would understand that, because we can get complaints about homelessness, and that's the first thing I always say to them, is it's not against the law to be poor, you know, so. If it wasn't for the grace of God, we'd all be that way, or you'd be that way, so, that kinda changes people's tunes a little bit about complaining about it. You know, they just, they need to, they're just looking for a place to lay their head.
We could put that application boxes up with the blessing boxes too.
Yeah, wouldn't hurt, would it?
All right.
All right.
Does anybody got anything else?
Let's take that, all right.
Nice, sir, is there anybody in favor? Yes.
Yes, and these, I'm just gonna get these hung up.
Small stuff instead of aggravating this guy, covering everything I can.
Ready, we'll see you next month, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Get it, I got all them numbers on my YouTube page, everybody they can call. Alrighty, that concludes the Everts City Council meeting, y'all have a good one. Make sure you like, comment, subscribe, and share. You're welcome to send super thanks, and you can even be a member of the channel if you wanna be. We're going to end this one here.